Good evening, welcome to the Village Board October 27th workshop. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mayor Sorino.
Present.
Trustee Sadadi. Absent. Trustee Ponti.
Here.
Trustee Neznik. Absent. Trustee Huber.
Present.
Trustee Ruffin.
Here.
Trustee LaRocella.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Someone's gonna make a motion to pay the bills that had been paid by the approved warrants?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Regular session. You'll see the KC Engineering update. You'll see the items, we've gone over these about seven times already. I will make that, I'll say it again. It's in here, about the light poles. Two of them. Of the light poles were not including the holder for the banner, so they're all installed, but two are coming back. And when the new ones come in, they'll be swapped out. And since the building inspector's here. I think we're ready for somebody for a three-season CO, Brian. I think, is it conceivably possible that we can get an inspection that what we have to do or not do or something for the boathouse?
I didn't come prepared to talk about that tonight.
Okay.
I came for executive, but what I could say is, there was a memo that I had put out, I'd written quite a few months ago, that outlined what needed to be done. I have not received anything in response back to that memo. So, I would say no, but we can discuss it further. But I was, you know, I was asked to come for executive session, so I didn't really look into it.
Okay, okay, so maybe, what I'll say to that is that maybe then, when we get back to our zoning and code meetings, we can discuss that memo.
Absolutely, yeah, we can discuss tomorrow, I can look, you know, tomorrow actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor, before we get off the boathouse section, is there a plan to winterize it this year? Because I know it wasn't in the past and that was problematic. Especially as you just suggested having a three-season, or gathered that means winter's not one of them, right? Winter's not one of the three seasons, correct? So, you know, we had, I believe, we had a situation where we were heating an unsullied building for quite a while, spending a lot of taxpayer dollars on those resources, not being too green. So, I'm just wondering where that's at, who would be in charge of that, and how we would get that accomplished?
I believe that heat's turned off.
Right.
The heat's turned off and we can put antifreeze in the toilets down there, so.
Heat turned off because of...
I asked...
Because that was an issue, right?
Correct, you're right.
I asked John Kozak to do the rec buildings, which he did. I asked him to do the cobbler building and he said he would. And I also asked him about the boathouse.
Oh, great, thank you.
So, he'll go around, he'll put the antifreeze in and should take care of it.
That's not gonna be sufficient to that boathouse.
No?
No. You need to get the mechanical contractor that, I would advise you speak with the mechanical contractor, that entire thing is gonna freeze up.
I believe it has to be drained.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Say that.
Oh, you mean the floor system? The floor system?
Everything, there's lines run along the interior walls. You know, because the water main comes in through the front of the building, and everything's in the back of the building, so there's a water line that runs along the exterior, or the interior of the exterior wall. And if you let that thing, which it should, it needs to be drained, absolutely. But, it's not as simple as just putting antifreeze in the toilet bowl, which is one of them, absolutely, but, you know, you got supply lines inside those walls to the toilet bowls, to the sinks, they're all perfect.
Well, I know when, I helped John down at Vets, the same thing with the water lines. And he disconnects the meter when the water comes.
And drain the backwards, yeah, that's if it's designed to do that, you know, if that water line is pitched going towards the, not that you can't blow air through it, but, you know, it's not as simple as just putting antifreeze, or it is, whatever, it's not mine, so.
That's how, that's how John would do it, that's how he did it down at Vets.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask you a silly question. How was it done last year?
It wasn't.
It wasn't, the heat was on, water was on.
The waste of resources.
So, the heat was on and it wasn't drained, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And to, you know, Brian's point, like, you know, I didn't know what you're talking about, the antifreeze, but, I had asked around about that system and it seemed like it needed to be drained, like you're saying, if we don't do that, and the heat's not on, it's gonna be a major problem. The issue with having heat on is if there's no insulation, that's a serious drain of resources. Yes, so.
So, it's the water lines, now this radiant, okay, so, I think we're all...
We need to talk to the mechanical engineer that installed that pretty significant system, and they should have a battle plan on how to do that.
He seemed very competent. You know, myself and Cory and Kozak was there.
Well, it may have been left on for a purpose last year.
There should be no heat in it regardless, you know, none of that should be there, when it comes down to it, you know, honestly, there should be nothing. Should be no heat, there should be no air conditioning. So, it really shouldn't even be an issue, because it doesn't belong there. You know, that's just the honest truth.
Could you explain that?
There are no permits. The building is not, just like you were saying, the building is not gonna be efficient, you know, we were told by the state, do not even apply for a variance from the energy code. You know, you're changing the building from a garage to an occupancy, to an A2 or A3 occupancy, and you have to meet certain standards. And over time, there you go, that's all we got.
Which is overlooked.
Wasn't brought into my office.
Okay.
Well, that's really important information that we kind of need to know, right?
Yes.
So now, we're really reexamining the whole thing. Because you can't just do things when the state tells us we can't do something.
You just gotta do it right. You gotta insulate the ceiling, put sheet rock up on the ceiling, you just gotta do it right.
Yeah, there are ways, you know, I mean, I think personally, the ceiling is gorgeous, you know, and if the roof is, it appears a little bit older, I can't date the roof, you know, but, you know, I would think go the opposite way to save the inside, you know, the inside, although it's very echoey, you know, but yeah, you can either insulate from the inside down, or insulate from the outside up, and then put a new roof on, put a metal roof on it and be done with it. I'd be, it's easy to say, not right in the trash, but, you know, I mean, I would think that that would be the most efficient and long-lasting way to do it, and save, you know, the integrity of the inside is foam the outside, you know, foam the outside, not spray foam, just, you know, just foam, metal roof it, and in a hundred years, they could worry about it.
I believe that when I was doing some looking at that, the roof is quite old. It looks pretty good, but I believe it was installed quite a long time ago, probably at the end of the flood.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Any idea when that roof was put on, anybody? I think it's a three-tab, so it's relative, you know, most of the time you get architectural shingles these days, so.
About twenty, twenty-five years.
If it's a three-tab.
Probably about twenty, twenty-five years.
That they've been on, yeah, I love it, you know, I mean, it doesn't look new by any means, but, you know, it's also directly in the sun and it kind of gets beat on, you know, really hard every day.
Yeah.
I just think the enormous cost of the money that we've already put in it, and we really don't seem to be in too good a spot with it, and the code enforcement are telling us, you know, that's not a good, that wasn't good, was it?
No, that's not a good thing at all.
We probably should start taking this a little more seriously and figure that out. I'm surprised to hear the state said we can.
The state recommends, one of the state regional, you know, she's not a director, but one of the regional code enforcement officers, Erica Krieger is her name, and she handles variances. And we called it, I called her and asked her, and we were on speaker, I was on speakerphone and there were a couple other people in the room, and asked, what do you think the chances are of obtaining a variance? And went on to tell her what, and she said, don't even bother. You know, she's like, it will not be granted, you're a municipality, you're changing the use of the building, like, we're doing ev, you know, everything to that building, which it's great to reuse it, you know, absolutely, but, we change its classification, and once you do that, that's it. You know, you're to meet today's standard, you know, energy code wise.
Well, we're gonna have to take that seriously. Thanks for shining a little light on that.
That's fine, I, you know, I would've come more prepared to discuss that, it was not...
No, I just didn't know anything about...
Wasn't one that I was, you know, coming for, so, but that's just off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Okay. You can see the next item, the grease trap. See the vein part surveying.
That's one thing, well, if I get to comment on these, the grease trap, has anybody, so, I had read it and I thought it was very well-written, but they have, like, fees and fines, monetary numbers in there, and that obviously will be set by the board, I'm just wondering if that has been reviewed at all. They know most everywhere you hear grease trap, ah, but, you know, but there are some figures in there that KC had come up with, which I don't think are bad, they're relatively fair, but, there are some fees and potential fines that, you know, I think that the board should look at at some point if they have not, just to let me know.
I haven't seen it, I was thinking it was gonna be part of this one, and maybe it won't be, maybe somebody can tell us, I was assuming the grease trap thing was gonna be part of this...
Oh, the zoning code?
Yeah, is that not?
It's not, it's actually a separate, it falls under the sewer chapter, which, I think it's 128, but I'm not, yeah, it's...
I was expecting to see it soon.
Yeah, it's out, it's around. So, it just happens to be about the same time, but, will it be going through site plan, I don't want to necessarily say easier, but, would it affect submissions for site plan? Yes, but it's in a separate section of the code, not 151.
So, to answer your questions, no, we haven't reviewed it. We have the watershed revitalization, LWRP, and we have a few items in that that are part of that, that are forthcoming. Most notably, the pilot studies that will be probably coming to the board's attention in a month or two. That's already been authorized by previous board. And we have this ground field assessment moving forward. And we have an item in this about funding, and we're waiting to hear the status of that, if they're gonna extend the funding. Evidently, the village hasn't drawn down much of the funding that they were already given to the village, so, we're waiting to see if they're going to extend the funding. The Route 9 sewer, we're gonna talk about that in executive session.
This is a very crucial item, this Route 9 sewer.
You're absolutely correct. And, and there's the manhole project with that, that's gonna, could be a little bit contentious.
Correct.
So.
I think that would fall under, I mean, it's a shame that Arginio can't come back and do it, but, that would fall under second time and material, correct, or we have to go out and get three bids like we did in the park?
Well, it depends what the pricing is, but, we'll let the attorney address part of this in executive session. Because, couple points, a point that you mentioned, we're gonna discuss that. I will say, I will say that there's a scheduled meeting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock with the highway super, the attorney, the DOT representative and myself in my office at 8:00 AM, specifically for this manhole project.
Are they gonna talk about the ones on 9D on West Main Street also, or are we just concerned about the one over there?
Route 9, the maintenance agreement.
Well, again, like I said in the past, if, I understand we have to fix our problem, but, AT&amp;T has a problem on West Main Street with their manholes, I mean, those things are like craters. So maybe they can take a ride up there and bounce around in their cars.
Well...
Maybe tell them to come in that way through the village, to come to the village hall. This way they can hit them.
Okay.
And that, I'm just, that's how I feel, I mean, if we gotta fix ours, other people have to fix theirs.
Well...
And I know some of ours are up there too, but...
Yeah, I agree, it's not, it's not fair that we're allowing, it's not, I shouldn't say it's not fair, I don't think it's right that we're making our residents deal with these problems, that these contractors are, you know, just kind of doing self-part work on our property, and then just saying, well, that's showbiz, and it just doesn't seem, it's just not, doesn't sit well with me. The problem is they're adding up, there's a lot of...
Right, the building is always going back.
So it's like, it's one or two things here and there, it's okay, but, when you just, you know, have the manhole, you know, the sidewalks, the gas exchange...
Regulators.
Regulators, and you know, and you just keep having it, it's like, it's like, what are they, what are these people taking us for? Would they do this in Beacon? You know, would the people in Beacon allow it? I don't know, maybe they would, but I don't know, but I think...
Not on the desire of gold, they wouldn't.
So I think it's time with Kevin, like, trustee Huber, yeah, yeah, I think that trustee Huber has a good point, it's like, you know, if they're coming to, you know, to pull our coats about something, maybe we should show, you know, point them in a direction, say, what about this, we'd like to have some advocacy for our residents and our business people and our, you know, visitors. We gotta start to, to, to...
Yeah.
Fire that.
You got, you got Central Hudson digging in a brand-new sidewalk, they didn't even put concrete down yet, I mean, like, you know, the sidewalk's two years old, and here we got this item four. You go to any other town or city, be City of Kiki, City of Beacon, Town, they're required to put this stuff back, they just walk away from jobs here. I mean, I don't think it's right.
Well, obviously, there must be not good coordination.
Well, you know, it's gonna be, end up in like a hole we have on the sidewalk now on West Main Street.
We have an agreement with Central Hudson that whenever they dig up anything, the highway superintendent has to approve it. And if he doesn't approve it, he just, because it kicks it back to them and they have to make it right. That's the agreement.
But I don't think that, I don't think it has, I don't think he has any say on 9D though.
Well, it's said village property.
But it's also...
But that's also a state right-of-way, so I think he's...
Maybe.
He, I don't think he, because they have to apply for a permit to dig in right-of-way, like they did, they dug across all of West Main Street.
Right.
So, I'm sure a highway superintendent is not responsible for that, for, on the side streets.
Yeah, well, I thought you were talking about side streets, right?
No, I was talking about West Main Street, they ran a meter, they ran a line across West Main Street, they dug up a sidewalk, a brand-new sidewalk. And it's item four, and maybe the state will come back and fix it when they fix the other hole we have, but, I mean, that hole's getting bigger and bigger, I don't know how that's not an emergency, but, I'm not an engineer, but, I think it's disgusting.
Well, going back to the boathouse, I just texted John Kozak, told him to hold off on winterizing it until there's an understanding of how you do it.
Yeah, he should, the village should reach out to, the gentleman that installed it was very knowledgeable.
I don't know who the engineer was, I don't know if it was KC or who it was, but...
Nah, I, I don't know who, I should've, I should've said the contractor, not the engineer. The contractor that installed it, I don't know if it was designed, I don't know if it was designed by an engineer, I misspoke there, it was the contractor who we had met with, with the intention of him showing Cory and John and me just tagging along, how to winterize it, I believe, was the reason for the meeting. And then, the contractor convinced John and Cory that the best solution to that was to leave it on without draining it, because it could potentially be damaged.
That's my understanding, leave it alone.
Yeah, well, my understanding...
Get down to fifty degrees and leave it alone.
It can't be there, is the issue, so if it's damaged or not, it's gotta go. Like, there are no permits, it's not, like, it doesn't belong there. You know, if it was anybody else except Bill, we'd be in court.
That's a different issue, that, I think the issue that was raised is should we winterize it or not, whether it should be there or not, I think we should winterize it.
I think it should be winterized, absolutely.
Whether it belongs there or not is a different thing.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't have to winterize it if it wasn't there.
Brian, who would be responsible for overseeing the winterization?
I'm sorry?
Who would be responsible for overseeing the winterization of that particular building?
Whoever's in control of the buildings.
I'm the building manager, among a few other things. I will try to reach out to whoever I can, if you will help me.
I will, absolutely, I'll go down there with them, I have...
Or give me a name and a number, I can call tomorrow to meet with John, myself, and you, or whoever else wants to be there, to figure out what's the correct, proper approach to take.
I have absolutely no problem with going.
And then I'll feed, I will feed that back to the board.
You know, but, as far as who to contact, I would contact the contractor, we had to pay someone, I would assume, right, I shouldn't, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say we had to pay someone. You would think someone would wanna have gotten paid, I'll put it that way. So, we should have a contact number to somebody.
Okay.
That's what I would start with, but...
I think that that particular service is not subject to the procurement, you know, requirements, because it's under a certain value, but, in my experience, it's been under five hundred dollars for that type of service, do you know of it?
You know, I think it would be, I believe the contractor, you know, nothing was written down, I think it was more than that, probably two to three thousand, because there was quite a bit of antifreeze that had to be pumped into the floor, into the heating system. You know, it's quite large.
Residential house, I didn't...
Yeah, yeah, you know, I mean, it's a relatively large system to do.
Is that something the board wants to authorize the mayor to seek bids?
Well, I have a couple other questions though, since we've now crossed into this territory. This has been a long, ongoing project, this boathouse.
Yeah.
So, at what point, after they did the, as they were doing the floor work, maybe Kevin, you could help, help me here a bit, when they put this radiant heating in? The radiant heating's gotta be in for six or seven years, correct?
Yeah.
No? When did the radiant heating get put in?
When they did the floor, about what, two years ago?
Two years.
Who allowed all this to happen without the permits?
Two years ago, the radiant heating got put in?
Who was on it? Two, three years.
Okay, and so...
I don't wanna assume, I don't officially know who was in charge, I don't know who was officially in charge with it, what I do know are, there were no permits for any of the heating or the cooling issued by my office, nor did we review any drawings. We issued permits to the bathrooms and the electrical work tied to the bathrooms, that's what the permits were issued for.
I get that, I'm just trying to understand, who was in charge of saying, okay, we're gonna cherry pick and we're gonna get a permit for the bathroom and the, and we're not gonna get a permit for all this other stuff, I'm just curious, who was in charge of doing that?
You know...
Was that the owner, was that the mayor, was that, I mean, there's gotta be an answer.
I think it was more the mayor.
Okay, well, that's good to know, I just wanted to know.
Meaning, I mean, we never checked with Brian to see, I mean, I've never, I'm not speaking for the rest of the board, but I have never checked with Brian to make sure we're all legit, I was assuming that we're legit on doing what we're doing, and...
Right, so he was the project manager, we'll say then, the mayor was the project manager?
Correct. I believe that the mayor was the driving force, and then, my understanding was that the architect was what I would call a project manager.
Okay.
But it doesn't, who was that?
Don Schwartz?
Yes, thank you, yes, Don Schwartz.
Okay.
But that, you know, doesn't seem to be the case, because when it was brought to my attention, when all of this stuff was put in, and then the previous administration was at, oh, you know, we wanna CL, and I'm like, well, what's that, what's that, what's this, what's that? And then where is XYZ, you know, inspections, where, where are all the sign-offs from the architect? You know, the framing inspection, you know, the rough plumbing inspections, the electrical inspections.
That architect, I recall signing bills late, late in the game, right, Mike, got paid serious, serious money. So, to be doing that level of work, to not, that seems awfully suspect.
Well, I, you beat off the point that I was trying to make, I wanted the timeline of when this radiant heating was put in, because you're putting the copper tubes in the concrete, and so, at what point did they fill the system, is what I was gonna try to get there.
Maybe after the floor was poured, I'm assuming.
So, it's been in for three years, and they must've run the heating system for at least two of them, right?
Yeah, that's part of the problem, you know, I would think so, yeah, at least.
I'm just trying to get a timeline.
No, I get it.
Why can't we just make it a three-season place?
Yeah, Brian?
Scratch the heat.
What is, that's the most cost-efficient way to get this inspected, we don't want you to do anything unethical, or issue permits that aren't right.
No, no, yes.
If we abandon those copper pipes, let's say, and take out the heating unit itself, would that meet your inspection criteria to issue a permit? If the copper pipes are just abandoned there and they're not removed?
That's one phase of what he's gonna do.
Yes.
What are we, what are we looking at here?
So, let me, so to obtain a C O for a three-season room.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if the mechanical systems are disconnected. You know, um, not, not just shut off, disconnected, not, not removed, just disconnected, pull the power from it or whatever it may be, so somebody. Can't just go in there and hit a switch. You know, um, to obtain a C O for a three-season room. I, I had written the memo, um, for that. I, I wanna say on that memo was an electrical inspe, I might miss a couple. Or I might add one, cause I don't.
Uh, 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 Ryan.
What was, uh, le- electrical inspections. Um, for all the electrical work, plumbing and framing inspections for the bathrooms. Um. The alarm.
System.
System, the, the drawings and the license. The New York State license of whoever installed it and all the certification and the testings that had to go along with it. Um.
That, that.
I think, I think there's one or two, and I think it was the, uh, the architect's. Draw, his sign, yeah, his, his, his sign-offs.
I have a disconnect here, because I'm just.
I have it in my truck, that piece of paper.
Yeah, I, I have it upstairs in my email, too.
I, I just have a disconnect here, because here we're in this building. We have our offices and we have a boathouse and we're doing a project. Now, I know what it took when I built my house in the village. You do phases at a time and you call for inspections and you get the inspections on the time that they give you.
Yep.
And so this is no different. So we have the code office and we have. The administrative offices and they're not that far apart. And I would've thought that as they were moving along on this, you were consulted. It sounds like to me you weren't consulted.
I, I wasn't consulted at all. I was told that the architects will take care of it and so will the engineers on the exterior.
So was that architect who I know?
Me too. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And he's a credible architect.
Very, and he's a very good architect.
Was he supposed to get all these permits for the village on the village's behalf?
I, I don't know what the.
I think not. I think he might've applied for inspections and whatever, but someone had to do it.
I, I, I believe that they were doing them, um, cause they were the, uh, design professionals on the project. We were never called and like you were saying, there, it's literally thirty feet down the hallway. We were not contacted once to do an inspection. Which led me to believe that the architects, who were down there all the time, were doing it, cause they're legally allowed it.
This is mind-boggling, because I have to figure, with all due respect, and I'm making assumptions here, but. In ten years since I got off the board. And you're in that position, basically.
Yep.
And we had one mayor.
Yes.
I'm sure you were called into his office numerous times for other items. I mean, and he, and he.
Yeah, you're assuming correctly.
What's that?
I said, you are assuming correctly.
So he couldn't talk to you about this project? Or?
You know, what, what I would say is to that, um. My personal feelings, which are my personal feelings, is that they didn't want me there.
Okay.
So we could get to where it's at. That's, that's my personal true honest opinion.
Okay.
But when it comes down to it, we needed you at the.
Exactly. And that's why it's not there. Like I said, all, I've said all along, many years, that.
Okay.
I'm not doing.
Medicate this the best we can and we'll see what.
Yeah, you know, that, that's my personal.
Like somebody that puts an apartment in the basement and then wants to get a C O and then if we're doing it, he's like, he can't do it.
So, okay, so.
So, well, well.
Thank you for that. You know, right or wrong, I don't, I don't know the, the thing, but like I said, at the beginning of that project. We had the call with the state and, and they were very clear and then it turned into what it is.
But, but at the moment, we all agree it should be winterized.
Correct.
I believe it should be winter, maybe a month or so. I don't think it's, it's not pressing right to second.
No.
You know, um, I don't think till mid-December, do you really see anything being really winterized?
Thinking before I, before I get into this, I wanna make.
I don't think we need to run out tomorrow and get somebody to winterize it, no. You know.
Okay.
I think we could maybe find somebody and, and my, you know, there are a lot of.
I, I think the clerk will have to scour around for a price and whatever.
That's, I would say, yeah, you know, I don't think necessarily you need to be installing.
I have resources that can do it.
Yeah.
Hoster, I bet, could do it.
Right.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I do my own upstate. It's, it's not a big deal.
No, but you've got all those pipes running through the floor.
I agree. I know.
And they're packed, cause they come out to the, they come out to the, so they're plastic, so that's a little, they're better. They're, they're not copper. At least coming out of the slab to the furnace, what, um, they're packed. Do they change underground? I don't, I wouldn't think so. I don't think so. But I, I believe that they, they're gonna be packed, just, and packs is plastic. Just like.
Okay.
Lot less expensive than copper.
I'm on it. I'm on it. Okay. I was approached by the, uh, police commissioner a while back, a month or so. That the lighting in the police station parking lot is very dark and. They want the lighting increased, so I called Soltis, our consultant electrician. And he told me what he thought we should do. I contacted Central Hudson and, uh, they said they would take care of it. But they have a form that requires board approval, because whenever you change the lighting, it changes your bill. That's all it is. So if I could have a motion to. Sign, for me to sign off on that authority, I would appreciate it.
Make the motion in a second.
If they say that it's gonna change the bill for the better?
It'll, it'll make the parking lot a lot, it'll take, uh, probably a little more energy, but I don't think much. It's, their LEDs could go down.
Are the LEDs now?
No, yeah.
So it'll go down?
It'll go down, probably. Kevin Huber. It was Adam Lorisella, Kevin Huber, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, I've been approached by the village justice to. At the moment, he's thinking about adding on two part-time deputy court clerks. At the moment, we have two. We don't have an additional two slots in our inventory with civil service. It's a matter of me writing up a request for two more of them. So before I go and write up this form and everything that goes with it. I would like permission to do that from the board.
He doesn't wanna hold, replace it with a full-time? He can get a full-timer retiring and he's not wanting to?
Well, that's why I said at the moment, um, it changes. His idea sometimes changes.
You mean non-competitive?
Maybe tomorrow, they're non-competitive, non-competitive part-time positions. He has, uh, Teresa in one at the moment and Genie is in one. The whole issue is about Donna leaving.
Yes.
And who would be replacing her. So I think his thoughts were to get two more part-timers in and then maybe eventually. Refill the vacancy caused by Donna using one of them. So, but before he can go out and hire anybody, I have to make sure we have a slot. And I don't, I don't have a slot.
I'll make a motion. You can look into that.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
So what's the motion? Are you gonna be?
The motion is that I will write, uh, using, touches county form MSD two twenty-two, request for new positions. For our inventory.
Of, uh. There's a request that we have these.
Deputy court.
Slots available.
Okay. I interrupted you in the middle of the motion, so the vote has to take place. I apologize.
All in favor?
Hi.
The motion was made, um, by trustee Huber, seconded by trustee Lorisella.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, now I'd like to draw your attention. I am the safety rep for the village, along with my committee members. Trustee Bogey is one of them.
We, we have a, I consider the safety issue continuing on West Main Street. The lamppost got knocked down.
Yeah.
So. So taking, taking over that, I am going to, I have passed our electrical consultant. Soltis. To. To give me an estimate of what he thought needed to be done there to, I know we're not gonna replace it. But they're above ground, they're about that high and it could be trip hazards. Uh, if it weren't for the comb machine on top of them, but we're not gonna leave the combs there forever. So what I.
Nice, why not?
Yeah. Yeah, but they match the other.
Yeah.
Little copper up.
That's the thing, the part we're looking at.
So what I'm really asking the board to do tonight is to take a look at these handouts I have. And it, it really would hinge on, if you read, if you look at number three and number four. The cost of doing this is not a whole lot from electrical's point of view. The cost comes in when you need somebody to saw cut. Them out and then pour concrete in their place and level it. And what he's saying, which is not unlike the project going down in Deer Park, is to have the highway guys to saw cut around them. And he would be there to supervise it, to make sure that the electrical situation hasn't take place thus. Just a little background on these. The first one went down on a personal storm after they were installed. By a New York State DOT truck. So we got a witness. They walked away from that. They were not insured. Because we can't insure everything with the insurance port. They are scrapped. They're down at the boathouse. Which seems to be the point now where we put them and they're, and they're scrapped. Okay? They're shot. The design was, they're eating breakaway. They're, they're constructed that when they do get hit. They won't come down on top of the car to hit them. They go the other way. That's purposely designed for that. And they did go the other way. In fact, there's still one up there that's leaning. And that's the other portion of this I wanted to talk about to you. Is we need to get a time back to take the leaner down. Before it goes further into that abandoned building or it's hit by another snowplow or wind or something, you know? So I don't know if we're gonna highway now.
I talked to Pete.
You would talk to Pete about two things. One is would he help saw cut when the time comes? That's number one. Coordinate the cement, the cord that they do with sidewalks. And the other thing is, can he get an, can he get a construction company to take the leaning one down?
Who took the one?
The other ones went down, uh, one by wind, one by car and one by snowplow.
So, you know, we could just maybe wait for the first snowfall and we'll get a lot.
Well, it's gonna go through the window of that house, so.
It'll go through the house.
Just kidding, I wouldn't. We gotta get it taken, I, I would just say we have to take it down. We have to do these things.
If the cone.
Not over fees, oh, we should be able to, Mike, would you agree we can?
Why can't the lawyer do it?
We gotta do this.
You have to do it.
These are the things we should not do, man.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a bucket truck to take off the stuff.
They're heavy, so you'd have to have a backhoe, I'm told, to come in and you would chain the pole.
That's if you're taking the whole thing down. Then, they, when they put them up, they, they used a bucket truck.
Oh, I, I don't know.
And electrician has them.
Seven grand.
And I've seen it a few times and helped with the, the banners also.
Oh, they put them up in pieces? I don't know.
Yeah.
They stack them.
Yeah.
This, this though, I'm told, because.
It's all looking so flat.
It needs to have police there.
More conversation, please.
You need to understand, coordinate with the electrician to disconnect everything, to be there to, I guess. And then take it down. I don't know. Is that something the highway guys can do?
I, I, I don't wanna speak for the highway guys, but I just think it's, I mean, you're putting a, a backhoe with the bucket all the way up. You need to have to.
For town.
Somehow get a guy on a pole and chain it up and chain it to the bucket and. Come back down and it just seems more dangerous. I'd rather see if our electrician could use his bucket truck. Because that's how, I think it was Black that put them in, electrician company, I think. Don't hold me to that name. But that's how they put those lights, those lights in.
Okay. My point here is that we have a safety situation. We gotta address existing and. My research tells, it looks to me like we, I think we have the resources to do this, but.
Yeah, I, if you're talking safety, man, I think that one's not safety, using a.
If you can talk to your highway guy and see what part, uh, any, or if any of this they can do, we'll know how to move forward.
Okay.
And we, we'll have to work at getting it, because it's gotta, it's not fair to get it to the residents.
It looks terrible, Tim.
No, yeah, no.
That whole side of the street looks terrible.
Just for your information, the, the reason I think those particular ones go down, because they're the only ones that don't have parking spots next to them. The ones going up the hill on East Main and the, the ones on the opposite side of the street had parking. There's cars there, so. The likelihood that a snowplow's gonna go over there and way over there and knock one of them down is remote. These were within inches of the highway.
Yeah, it's a weird place to put a light, I would say.
Yeah.
It looked nice for the.
It looks beautiful.
They had them, but.
Who puts one so close to the road? Seems like a hazard.
It was a design that was even approved by New York State DOT. Thank you for that. Thank you.
You got it.
I'm in receipt of a letter.
Before you move forward, do you want some kind, we've discussed the trip hazards, so do you want a motion for something?
I, trustee Huber is, yeah, we can make a motion that trustee Huber will talk to.
I'll talk to Pete. You don't even, you don't need a motion. Make, make, make me go talk to Pete.
I would just like him to get back with me and so I know where we're going.
Okay.
Are they gonna help out, like they're doing the trench?
Yeah, they're gonna help. They're a great crew.
Right, right.
So you're talking safety, I mean, you're, you're putting a bucket.
But those still help, doesn't mean they do it all, but some of it.
He may have to go to Sacone.
Yeah.
To take the pole down that's leaning, but once that's gone, there's four other problems.
I've seen him put up with a bucket truck. I don't know why we can't take him down with a bucket truck. I mean, they're.
Dashed a bucket. Just kidding.
Well, I saw the two lampposts at the boathouse.
How'd they go up with a backhoe?
No, they used their scissor lift.
Yeah.
They chained it to the scissor lift and they just raised it up and whatever.
In one, in one piece they did. They did, they did it together.
Well, they all came together, except for the little piece on the top, I guess.
Okay, I think you're right that Black put it up.
I think it was, I think it was Black.
I bet their bucket truck was probably pretty.
Okay.
Pretty good. They did get others. They're pretty large.
So.
Call them, don't take it down.
Kevin's gonna get back with me and I will email you all with where we are in this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I am in receipt of a letter somewhere. From. Put my, I have my cashews on it.
I'm sorry, could I mention one more trip hazard?
Commander, Commander Joseph Angelo, VFW Post five nine one three eight School Street, August seventh. This letter is to him from Cynthia Butler, president of the, uh. Volunteers, I don't know what they call them. Auxiliary, I guess.
The VFW?
Yeah. At a regular meeting August fifth, the auxiliary by motion properly carried wishes to hold a volunteer toll fundraiser. The fundraiser would be held on Saturday and Sunday, November thirteenth and fourteenth. And May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. and 14th and May 28th and 29th, 2022, at the intersection of West Main Street, Delverne Avenue between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. The post is desirous of having village board approval. This is something they've done annually for a long time. So the board doesn't have any objections and you can make a motion to allow that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Carrie?
At the last meeting, we had a motion for me to publish a hearing notice in the newspaper. And then we realized afterwards that you have to be aware of the local law first before we can schedule a hearing. So I think we, attorney, do we need to redact that motion or do something with that motion that?
Well, it's a nullity because we didn't have the actual law for the board's consideration to instruct you to publish for a public hearing.
So for the minutes going forward, do I need a motion for them to?
Yes, we're gonna, we're going to now entertain a new motion, but now you have in your packet the local law, which has the language for the opt out of the the opt out of that, the opt out language that we had discussed in previous meetings. There's also two, a resolution for each of the options that you have, the onsite dispensary and onsite consumption. You can vote for both or split it or neither. If you do nothing, remember, you would be opting in and there would be no need for any further action. Of course, if you do, when you adopt this local law, it's subject to a permissive referendum. So I'd ask that the, if it's the pleasure of the board to instruct village clerk Cars to publish the local law and we'll have a public hearing and this has to be adopted before the end of the year or some type of action has to occur. Any questions?
No. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
The motion is for me to establish a a public hearing for November, correct?
The public hearing would be for the November meeting?
Yeah.
When is that, mayor?
Pardon?
When is that date?
Mayor Serino and trustee Ponti.
Second Wednesday in.
November 10th.
Yeah.
2021. That would be the public hearing date.
The public hearing date will be?
November 10th.
What time is that?
7:00.
7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's on page three.
Yep. Well, that's, you made the motion last time, but you didn't have the local law, now you do.
Right there. You need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
One thing before we move on, uh, Brian Murphy had wanted to bring, was, was still on the trip hazard thing. Started to speak, but we were kind of doing something else.
Yeah, give him an opportunity to. Thank you. Um, in front of the dumpster here at Village Hall, there are two large craters. Wondering if we could get those fixed?
There's two what?
Two, two huge pockets. Over time from when the dumpster, the, the garbage truck comes in, I mean, it's, it's a foot deep.
Kevin, can they saw cut them out and put cold patch or something in there?
It's black top, it just lines up with the dumpster, you're probably gonna have to pour concrete. You know, cold patch, that, that.
Probably got to do it.
I think that garbage truck is gonna go right back through it.
Yeah.
You know, but they're deep and, you know, bringing things to the garbage, they're.
Tripping full.
Yeah, like the one on the right hand side, it's, it's a foot, it's over a foot deep.
That is a very good point.
I can ask Pete.
That's just the drive on the block.
It's from where the, I, what I think it's from when the garbage truck comes to get the dumpsters over years. You know, it, it just, it lines up, the dumpster sits in the same spot, so it just lines up and maybe if he's got to turn or tighten.
I'm only asking because I'm thinking of my, my.
Yeah, you know, yeah, I think maybe if you gotta line up the forks a little bit left or right, just over years and years, it just. Yeah, I mean, it's what it is, you know? Thank you, thank you very much.
There's one more item regarding Mackie Budson Wise. When the board hired David Wise months ago to be labor counsel, there was a resolution before this board for the entire firm. And so there's no further action needed, individual action needed. Continue with that firm, even though Brooke Youngworth is taking over for David Wise's role, so. The entire firm, there's nothing that the board needs to do.
Oh, we still have that firm?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Still the same firm.
All right, strike that. All right, mayor, that, that's the end of the printed portion.
I have a, I'd like to talk about. When you're ready.
I indicated on here.
The items.
You do go into that.
Well, are you, are you staying in executive session?
Uh, I can stay until about seven, if you need me. If you need me, mayor, I'll certainly be there.
I'll let Kevin, trustee Huber, you got something?
Yeah. In my travels this weekend, I think about a few things. Uh, Shooshine Park, the, the shoe proper building, as you would call it. And we, we just talked about it tonight and winterizing it. May, maybe we can rent this thing out. There was a, there was a guy that was interested in, I don't know if he still is.
With all due respect, this is an executive session item.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I think, I mean, it's either use it or lose it. I mean, this is, this do sign with it. Because it's a waste right now. And, and before we do anything, let's double check with the building inspector, make sure we're legit in this thing, we, whatever we've done in it.
Yeah, I haven't been going into it because I don't, we issued a couple permits to it, I know.
So you know what's been done, I think the only thing left is the door.
I, yeah, it, it has to be, it, the, the way that I, this code, again, and you know, it was, it was, it's a change. Depending on the use, but it, it's now government, it's administratively owned. I mean, I need to be ADA compliant.
If the village residents gotta do it right and I gotta do it right in my house, the village has gotta do it right in their house.
I mean, they, they, they had the foresight to put the sidewalk to the window, so. They at least got that memo from me. Um, with, with the park, I haven't been down there to look at it, it's not a building, so it's not, you know, un, under my purview, but.
We've talked about the stairs.
And I, I hear that they're cracking again.
Are they?
That's what somebody hit down there. You know, so you might want to get their village engineer to look at it because I'm pretty sure they gave us an extended guarantee that that self leveling concrete would not chip away.
On my way home tonight, I will take a look.
Yeah, you know, like I said, I have not, but somebody said it's cracking significantly.
I'll, I'll take a look.
Um, and instead of the one year, I'm pretty sure there was a two year, if not further. Warranty guarantee or whatever.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say, just a reminder, those stairs will be, the, the gate will be locked as of December 1st. I already talked to Pete about this last year, this way, the village will not have to take care of those steps during the winter months.
Yeah, that'll prolong their, like, you know, so.
Having to chip the ice and everything off.
So.
Good thing.
That, that is gonna be the game plan again for this year.
I can give you a full update on the whole thing in executive session if you want.
I appreciate that.
Uh, we had vandals there recently that tried to take a capstone off the top on the far right as you go into the lot and tried to push it down into the gorge. It was so heavy, apparently they couldn't do it. It was brought to my attention and I called the highway superintendent, uh, foreman. I said, you can't put it back on by hand, you're gonna need to have a backhoe or something. I think he did it, I think he pushed it back on. So let's be prepared for that kind of activity to take place there.
How does that sound like a fun, like?
Well, they have a park bench on the, on, on, on the dock down Spring Street. It's a clever idea, but I just see it gonna go into the lake. I, I just went down there tonight and I sat, I mean, clever idea, you know, like, I can just see it.
It should be fastened to the.
I, yeah, well, they drug it out of the woods because I've moved this park bench out of the woods a few times since that part.
I just have one quick question before we go into either, I know you've been asked a lot of things, Kevin, tonight, so, or Anne, but if you guys had looked into the ruts, I had gotten some complaints by residents after the festival of the falls, that there's some paths in, in Mizzou Park that have these ruts, kind of probably through drainage and something like that, and I sent some pictures over. After I spoke with Mr. Cars, told him to reach out to you guys, so I was just wondering if you guys had spoken to anyone regarding it?
They're gonna put Timmy on it.
Okay.
I think they already fixed it.
Has he?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I think.
All right, I'll have to double back, they were recently, but, but I hadn't looked in.
As recent as?
Maybe a week?
Oh.
But I have to go look.
Okay.
Cause that's great, maybe you already did it, maybe I just.
I'll, I'll, I'll take a look again, I'll get a hold of them or.
It was just something that was on my mind when we were talking, so. All right, cool.
Okay, but since we're in that vicinity here, uh, the clerk runs the, the action, so to speak, on the Cobbler Building and he has generated an estimate for the door at the Cobbler Building.
The door being that since we cannot use the front door as ADA, I can't make that 36 and make it work because there's a lip. So they all knew about this when they did the design. So they said, go to the north side of the building, take the window out, take out the red brick underneath it, put your ADA 36 inch door there. And there's already a sidewalk leaning, leading up to that point. I have an 18 dollar, 1800 dollar estimate for it from a contractor we've used in the past. It's a question now of door availability.
Okay.
But I'm on that. Now, there's more than one, Soul Music or, there is a guy that's very interested in renting and leasing it. Okay? And there are four others that are interested in it, from doing nails, hair, all different, selling food, all kinds of stuff. People want that building. It's a very attractive building. It's almost done. It's just the door. It's got central air, it's got heat, it's got a new modern bathroom, it has a complete new roof and the brick on the outside has been pointed up, it's been freshly painted, sheetrocked and painted. Okay? Funding kind of held me up during the COVID period, so I didn't go forward with the, with the door. I did call the contractor though, again, to see if the 1800 dollar price is still holding. Again, it's dependent now on getting a door. That's the long and short of it. Soul Mouth, I think, what's the?
Yeah, Jason Gisser from Soul Mouth Radio, I think we should push to, if he's interested, it's just that's a more of a okay, maybe based thing that we're off base here.
But let's, let's, we have a meeting coming up in November, let's determine who's going to, who we want to do the leasing to or whatever. Let's get a motion and an approval for authorizing for the door.
I'll make a motion to authorize down.
I'll second that.
Get the door.
Okay, but.
That's, that's.
Do I, do I really need to have that door there? That little building?
Yeah, if we got, if I gotta do it right in my house, we gotta do it.
There, there's no, there's no size exception to being, uh, accessible.
Because it's a public building?
Yeah, and it's a change of use.
Well, because let's just be, put it in its simplest terms.
It's the law.
It's the law, Kevin had to do it. Other people have to do it.
And you approve like up to on a cap of, let's say, 2,500?
I'll say 2,500.
Yes. 3,000.
Okay.
I'm saying that's high.
Oh, I think, I think that's personally high.
Well, you got a lot of brickwork. It's gotta come out and it's gotta look original. It can't be something different.
Put a door in there, it would look original.
The window is much larger than 36 inches.
Yeah, so put a sidelight in it.
He's gonna put red brick down around it. Right?
I wouldn't know.
So it looks as, well, that's what I want. I want it to look aesthetically correct.
It, it would look aesthetically correct with a sidelight. There's a lot of things to do, but I'm not, I'm not gonna give you. That'd make your work because you wanted the red brick.
I would ask to put an ADA door there.
Okay, I think what the board wants is a nice job, not a cobb job for the Cobbler Building.
Right.
Shooshine Park.
You're right on, mayor.
We want a nice job. I don't care what it looks like, as long as it's a nice job.
I'll make a motion to go on executive.
So hold it, we're not done yet. I have a couple of items here. The trunk or treat for Halloween, the Saturday, the original date is postponed because we're expecting IV rains. And we're looking for Sunday, but we will make a final decision. The recreation committee will make a final decision on it tomorrow night. How the weather goes. So that's one of. The parade, obviously for Saturday, the parade and the trunk retreat is canceled. And so we'll decide what the, what the version will be for Sunday. Whether there'll be a parade or no parade. It looks like they're leaning right now, no parade because everything is so wet.
Well, I believe also we're not gonna have the parade on Sunday because they also have to touch a truck.
I know, they're talking about other things, but they'll probably make that announcement the Thursday night unless I don't know anything. Danny?
The, the parade looks like it's canceled.
It's what?
Canceled altogether.
The parade is canceled altogether.
They're gonna do it in the park trunk retreat.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. If it goes on as it is for Sunday.
I think that's the way they're going for Sunday.
Sunday, there was a function at the homestead. And a few people attended. Trustee Laura Sella, actually Craig Wallace, myself and others.
I was here.
And John Carge. And we got a nice little event, all things considered, and actually it was quite spectacular. And this was actually for the board, their trustees from the historical society invited the board. I will tell you, if you've never, you have to have gone there to see exactly what they've done in this building. It's actually, if you ever saw it from the 90s and now today, 30 years, what has transpired in that building, it's actually stunning. And of course, there were some refreshments and everything else, it was a pretty good time and you got it historical perspective. So I would like to thank Bet Divine and the Historical Society for putting that function on. And.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, it was really great, that I was unaware, I hadn't been there in years and years. The side, I went into the side one time, but it was hard to believe that, that it had been underutilized for a long time, but you know, they have a gift shop that is just like any other kind of, you know, it was interesting, I wouldn't have thought it was like something you could see a field, people go do a field trip to, you know, I, I just heard talk about it a lot and I, I never really, for whatever reason, it didn't, hadn't piqued my interest, but I was really glad that I took the chance to go and And the people who work on that homestead, for whatever reason, I'm sure they all have different reasons but are really passionate about that property and that family and the history there. And it was really excellent, I was really impressed. I did not know that when I went into that room, it was gonna be of that caliber. Not for any reason other than, and they were very proud to show it off and I think I was happy that, as a board, we've tried to help them, I mean, we evolved a little bit, but the board seems to continually support them and their efforts and you know, that's why I guess they were having the evening for us, but it was, it was great. My kids, even my kids liked it. They were, like, I mean, for nine and 11, they were engaged by it. The woman, was her name Christine that did this? She, she was great, she was like, I've walked a lot of old houses and she was every bit as qualified as some of those people in Vanderbilt. So, anyway, I agree, thanks to Mrs. Devine and everyone else who had us there.
Okay. Trustee Huber, you have a motion you want to make?
I'll do it in executive session.
A second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Ralph?
Final.
Did you want me to state for something?
Aye.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye? Okay.
I don't think we have, we're coming out and I'm.